Hey, Joe. You're on mute, Joe. Yep. You're muted. You gotta unmute yourself.
Hello, Dan.
Chief, how you doing?
Happy head.
Yeah, I had a... Go ahead.
Can you meet tomorrow at 3:00 instead of 5:00?
I would prefer it.
Well, we're good then, because they want to meet at 3:00. I said I would check tonight while I had you on a meeting and see that works better for me as well, so.
That works out just fine. Thank you.
I will let them know that we'll do it at 3:00.
Hey, I got a recommendation on the agenda tonight. I had a dry run with the developers, Kyle and Dan Griffiths, earlier today. And I know A is exclamation requests by applicants' owners. I thought that, you know, since they pretty much have presented already to the board, and obviously, it's whatever little presentation they're going to do is really not going to move the detail with regards to the people that are speaking tonight. Perhaps maybe we forego that, and then they just, the developers speak after all the comments are made and more to ask them questions, whatever else, anything that they, you know, want to do, if, you know, if you guys want to have the pull-up plans, of which Dan Griffiths can, he'll share the screen and pull up the plans and talk about anything you want to talk about. But maybe we just jump right into, I guess, B, just the board members talking amongst themselves about what's happening and things like that, perhaps. Or, and maybe even talk about, I know Joan sent the county review, the draft review. So maybe that's, you guys want to talk a few things about that, I don't know, or you may not want to enter at all. I'm not sure.
How are the people that are participating going to know exactly what is planned right now? What's been here, right?
Well, they know what's planned, pretty much. I mean, just a Dollar General is going to pop down on 281, and that's, that's pretty much what they want to speak about. Not necessarily the specifics of the job, though maybe one or two may speak to that, but the comments that I've seen is just, you know, we don't...
Basically, they don't want it.
We don't want it. X on that square. Yeah, they want ice cream. But once everyone's here, Joan and Chief, I'll just say my spiel, and then I'll, I'll get off and mute myself and all that good stuff.
Okay. And then when we're ready for... Do we need to do anything to make that adjustment to the agenda, Joan?
No, that's just notes I put on there for you.
Okay, so we can go right to B?
You can do whatever you would like. You are the chairman.
I just want to make sure it's right, but I think for the moment, I need to go a little four-legged creature in.
Hi, Mike. I think you're muted.
Oh, I'm muted, Mike.
You gotta be quiet while I'm on this meeting.
Now I can shout. How you doing, Joan?
There you go. Nice to see you.
Hey, Chief. Hey, Chief, you may want to put on another light, because as we move on here, you're going to start looking more and more like a hostage video, so.
Uh, well, that's about the only light I've got, unfortunately, where I'm at.
Okay.
Yeah, I know it's not a very good video, but I'm on my old computer as well. My first one decided it was going to update, and it's been doing it for two hours.
No overhead light or anything like that?
No. Nope. Oh, no. Old house, built in the 40s.
What a flashlight. Maile, and that's not an old house. 1819 is an old house.
Well, yeah.
And my house has a light in it.
This was an economy version. This was actually, oh, what was it before? It was Barden Homes. Allegheny.
Oh, yeah.
Oakland Ave. Yep, this is one of those.
If you want to see a fun thing, Zach sent me something that he fell upon on Facebook from 1980, a TV-produced thing up in Syracuse, I think, came and went to different towns. I lived up in Syracuse at that time. I came in '81. That was '80. And this was done, and they did a thing on Homer, and it's adorable. Have you seen it?
I've seen it. Yeah, I have. That's nice.
Yeah.
That is nice.
The hardware store and Frog and...
Yep.
Cool. Maile, did you see the thing from the county that Joan sent out?
I didn't, and I don't know why.
It's pretty well, pretty thorough.
I have a social security benefit thing here. It's checking, updating. Village Clerk. I don't have anything from Joan.
Joan, what time did you send that out? That was pretty recent now.
Well, it was this afternoon, because county planning was working.
Yeah.
I think it was around 3:30, maybe.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why I don't have it.
3:48.
Yes, Patty. Okay.
Let's see if it went to spam. Usually it doesn't, so.
Yeah, 3:48. And...
Nope, nothing in there.
On a mail-in Irish, right there.
All boxes.
Is it in your trash?
Well, that's what I was... I haven't trashed it. I don't know. I just...
Just resend it to you, forward it on.
I just got it.
All right.
It just came from you. Oh, boy, this looks like it might be a bit of a piece of paper.
They did a great job on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to try to print it out. I can't read everything as it is on my phone here. It's all kind of jumbled up.
You have to remember that that has not been reviewed by the planning board.
Correct.
Or adopted.
Right.
They meet the 21st.
So this is just a preliminary?
That's from the department. That's the staff report. And usually, the board will take that and, you know, put the same recommendations in there.
Right, but once the, once the county planning has approved it and sent it back, right?
Well, they don't approve it. They just give you, they review it for you, yeah.
And they have it done.
They make recommendations, and they'll get a resolution from the planning board.
Right, so we don't have any of that right now with this?
No, they don't meet until the 21st.
Yep, okay.
The 23rd, Mary said she would be sending out that, the final report from the board, which will be in the form of a resolution. So you want to wait until after the 23rd to get that report before you do anything, I would imagine?
I would prefer. Let me try to silence everything here on my phone, so that doesn't go ringing off.
Can you read it at all, Maile?
Not on my phone, and I'll have to get it and get it on the computer and...
I'm to see you. I'd have to move it over to you.
Oh, they need to see me? I didn't know that.
There's Dr. Merlin.
Good evening, everybody.
Who's Patrick?
Joan, I am hurt.
You know how many Patricks I know?
Yeah, but already as good-looking as me.
Not quite.
Well, currently, she can't see you, so she wouldn't know that.
Well, that's how, that's how I became so good-looking.
Imagination is a wonderful thing.
It's not too important.
Why don't I have the list of participants on the side of my screen, like usual?
You gotta push the Participants tab.
I don't have a participants tab. Whoops, there I do. I got it, 16. Oh, my goodness.
We keep forwarding.
Is there a way to print that off?
I'm sure, but I do not know off the top of my head.
Are you recording this, Dan?
This will be recorded and will be streamed live on our YouTube page.
Okay. How do I get a copy of the recording?
I send it to you.
That would be very nice.
You got it.
Is Kevin gonna be here?
I believe he's on the phone. He's on that...
He's the phone number.
Yep.
Can you hear me, Joan?
I can, Dick.
I got this figured out finally. I wasn't sure I was going to do it.
I told you not to give up.
I didn't.
You can teach an old dog new tricks.
It's hard, though. This 82 is killing me.
So missing two from the public hearing list, two folks. That's it. Everybody else is here.
Okay, we are at 6:30 by my clock, so I would like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And do we have to read the notice of the public hearing or any of that information?
Yes, yes, you do.
You want to go ahead and do that, someone, and then I'll say my spiel to all the folks on here, and then we guys get started.
I don't have that.
I don't have it either.
As was put in the paper. Is that something you have, or does anybody have right handy?
I normally do, but I do not this time.
Give me 30 seconds.
Okay, will do.
I might have it, too. I can look.
Who was that, Ashley?
Vicky.
Okay.
Okay, I have it.
Okay, Dan, if you'd like to go ahead with that and your part, and then we will commence from there.
All right, so I'm going to read the public hearing, then I'll say my spiel about how the meeting will be conducted. Proposed Dollar General construction at 5 Northwest Street, taxman number of parcels 66.80-1-32. Pursuant to Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.1, suspending the open meetings law one, the village of Homer Planning Board meeting will be closed to in-person attendance by the public until further notice. We encourage residents to request a Zoom link by contacting Dan Edgar at the village office by emailing clerk@homerny.org. You must request a Zoom link in order to make a public comment. Individuals may also watch the public hearing at the Village of Homer's YouTube channel. Please include a new email if you would like to participate directly in the remote conference. The above application is open to inspection at the village offices. All right. So, folks...
When's that published? Can you tell me?
I don't know. I don't have that off the top of my head.
I'll get that tomorrow.
All right. Everyone will stay muted during the call until, when I will go down the list. This is during the public comment. I'll go down the list, starting with the first person that requested on into, I believe I have eight altogether. You'll have your two minutes. It's not going to be, you know, I'm not going to time you. I don't have a stopwatch with me, but I will feel when it's around two minutes, I will interject, asking you to just finish up, please, and then we'll move on to the next. I believe the board is going to start talking amongst themselves, and maybe some comments, and then we'll move into the public portion. And then after that, the developers are on here, and they're willing to take a look at the, all the elevations they put in, the drawings, the site plan, everything that the board may have questions on, they can speak to, and then we'll finish up the meeting after that. And just as a precaution, we are being recorded, and this is being streamed on the YouTube page, and we're good to go, Chief.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan. So, from the members of the board, was everybody able to get the, and I know these were just recently delivered, the package from the developer in terms of blueprints with the elevations and property and those sorts of things? And I was just able to get a look at them today, and I did discover that there's a page that they sent, but they were all wrapped up in one inside the package that I picked up, so there's a page that they want to replace that's got some color in it that's part of the landscaping plan, so we need to get those back to the village, and the rest of you can, can get those. They just put in, in color kind of where things were. So does the board have any comments, questions, or anything amongst ourselves, or from, or to the developers who are on here? And I guess we have Dan and Kyle. Are you the folks? And Jason, maybe? Jason is?
It's correct, sir.
Yes, Dan Griffiths, Kyle, and Jason.
Okay, good. All right. So that's what I thought. It was the three people that would be from the developers. So any members of the board have any kind of questions or information that they might be able to answer for us before we go into the public comment portion of the meeting?
I would mention, just to record, that the developers made an effort to improve the the aesthetics of the building as we asked them to do. The, the drawings show the significant improvements of the front facade.
Anybody else? Dick, Ashley, Dan?
I have nothing at this point, Maile, and I want to hear what the public has to say. That's what I believe is, is the purpose of this meeting. Let's hear it, and we will have to come back at some later point, I think. I haven't really had a chance to digest all of those plans. I was able to pick them up Monday, but didn't really get a chance to go over them with the few things I had going on, but...
Um, I, just for everybody else, I would agree with that. I don't know if everybody was able to get a packet of all of the written material that was submitted from the public, but I certainly haven't had a chance to go through and read all of those. So we do have a lot of information that we would need to digest, I think, before we actually take any further action with the public. So if there is anything from any other of the board members, Dan, if you would like to go through the list of people that asked to speak, I think we're ready for that.
All right, I'll just mention, though, do you have the letters that wanted to be read into the record at your disposal to read?
Uh, I do, and I've talked with Joan, and she's confirmed this, and we do not have Dante on. But we don't have to specifically read them aloud. I will make note that all of these will be included as part of the record, so that, and that will be available, that's public, so we don't have to read each one of those in their entire...
They will be attached to the...
Right, they will, they will be a part of this hearing and this meeting as if they were read for everyone else.
They will be a permanent part of the record and available as will be the minutes.
Yep.
I printed them off today, and there are 85 pages.
Yeah, there's about a half inch of written material that I certainly have it ahead, a chance to go, you know, all the way through, so.
And you've got to have a chance to read all of them, too.
Yes. I don't know. Did anybody else in the board get a chance to read all of those? I'm guessing...
Yes, I did. Maile and I did. This is...
Boy, you're a good reader and a good person, Dick. Thank you.
I'm like Dan. We need to hear from the public.
Yep, okay.
And I did read a majority of Maile, and but I'd like to hear from the public, too.
Okay, yep. All right. Dan, I guess we're ready for that, then. Thanks for reminding me about the ones wishing to be read in, but they are going to be included as a permanent record. So, Dan, if you'd like to go ahead with the list of folks that you have and let them speak, that would be appropriate.
All right, well, the first one up is Dr. Richard Merlin to speak. You have the floor, sir. Just need to put yourself off mute.
Folks, down in the bottom corner is a...
Yeah, we got it. We got it.
Thank you.
This is Dr. Richard Merlin, resident of Homer for over 45 years.
We left.
His historic village does really not need a Dollar General store. They already have its store on Homer Avenue with lots of parking spaces. And most of the residents I've talked to agree with me that nobody really wants this store in the village. And I urged, I urged the board to please vote against the variance for their parking lot. So I'd much rather look the ice cream store than look at the Dollar General store, and I think most people agree with me. Thank you very much.
And I want to add, as his wife, that we would do anything to work towards ending this to happen. If we can get signatures, whatever.
ending this to happen, if we can get signatures, whatever we can do to work towards not having this happen. We live right two plots down. We've had enough with Burn Dairy, with Speedway. We need to stop the traffic congestion, the noise pollution, please, please listen to us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Merlin, thank you very much.
I have Mrs. Merlin's first name.
Just need unmute there.
Do I have Mrs. Merlin's first name?
I can get it for you, June.
Thank you. Judith.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, up next is Tim and Crystal Marsh.
We're out of here.
Hi, so I think, I mean, first of all, I I know I want to echo what Mr. and Mrs. or Doctor and Mrs. Merlin said. I mean, when I when I first heard about it, the only thing I could really think was why. And I was trying and trying to think of what really what the benefit to the Village of Homer would be to have a seventh dollar store within a three to four mile radius. And I, for the life of me, still cannot think of anything beneficial. But I did a little bit of research, and so the things I'm gonna talk about now are things that are not coming from me, you can, you know, Google it, look it up yourself, I can send you some of the links. But Dollar General has a longstanding history of concentrating or overpopulating with their stores, like small, like a small concentration of area and specifically feeding off of like specific demographics in those areas. So it's why it's not surprising when you see like two Dollar Generals, or they also own the Dollar Tree. So you'll see a Dollar General and a Dollar Tree within, you know, a mile and a half or two miles of each other, because this is what they do, they have a history of doing this type of things, and there's actually several cities across the country, again, you can Google this yourself, that are putting laws into place that permit the same business from building within a couple mile radius. In most of those cases, the precedent has been set by Dollar General. You know, proponents of the Dollar General will tell you that it's like, you know, positively impacts, you know, the communities, because specifically a lot of these stores are in communities that they identify to be lower income. But in reality, again, if you read these stories and these studies, it actually has the opposite effect on communities. So, you know, it's it's pushed out a lot of local business, it's put local grocers out of out of business, which we have one in our village, as you know. You know, there's nothing. You know, one of the studies that I read talked about putting, you know, putting a Dollar General in this lower income community. And, you know, the food that they sell in there, there's nothing healthy in there, a lot of the food is close to being expired. I mean, it's not. The word is I'm looking for, but it doesn't have the benefits that they're going to claim to, you know, to you that, you know, that it has.
If I can ask you to finish up, I would greatly appreciate it, at least just just a little bit more, please.
Okay, sure, they also have a history of, so stores that underperform get abandoned, you can find those in Dryden, New York, so does New York. And, you know, lastly, I would just want to say that, you know, for a small village like ours, it would be remove a business that actually supports the community, that supports little leagues, supports our local hockey teams and stuff like that, and replace it with a chain store like a Dollar General. If I wanted chain stores, I would have, you know, I'd live in Portland.
I only got twenty seconds, if that's okay with everybody. So my wife is very articulate and articulate, and I appreciate her. Look, to me, it's low rent. I don't want to hear, and the traffic down there is awful. And if you know people like I know, I'm sure they're gonna get DOT to go down there and do an inspection. But as you know, it's not what you know, it's who you know. So they'll get one of their buddies down there who owes them a favor, can do something and make sure it can pass. So if I'd like the board to see if maybe if they can get an independent study as well, maybe get somebody out there to do another one. Because you know they're gonna get an answer that says yes. And two, we live behind the Speedway and I get to see the back of everything. I don't want to tell you what I've seen back there, it's inappropriate, my wife told me not to say it, so I won't. But I don't want to see a loading dock out back like I have back here. If it does go through, we'd like to have some full grown trees maintained for a couple of years, like they have trees back there, so I don't have to look at the loading dock and whatever else is back there, the trash and other things, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't know if Jo- Joanne and Ward Dukel are on here? I don't think so. All right, so I'll move on, Michael Riley, please.
Stuck with me, Mrs. Michael Riley. Thank you for allowing us all to speak tonight. I know I've got two minutes, I have several questions. So I think what I'd like to do is just ask my questions and maybe at the end we can get them answered. And my first question is, does the Dollar General do a needs assessment for the area that they plan to build? Knowing that we do have two family dollar stores and one Dollar General within just miles of this current proposed location. The other one is, can the planning board request a design change for the Dollar General? I believe it was done when the original Express Mart was being put up to fit in better with the Village of Homer and what we try to present as the Norman Rockwell look. I know, I believe the store, the Express Mart was was modeled after a store in Fayetteville. In the event that this does happen, will the planning board send these final plans to a site plan review? Will the village, county, or state do a traffic study on Rowan Corridor two eighty-one, which is what the MARTA's asked? After Burn Dairy is open operational for two to four months, I think we're going to see an even more impact of traffic for sure on this corridor, and the surrounding neighborhoods are are really affected by this, as is walking traffic. I think that is instrumental. I also have a bit concerned about water. The backup of water uncertain not every year, but there is a trench that runs between Superscoops all the way across two eighty-one, down the side of Pizza and More, under Meadow Drive, and all the way over to Bartlett. And Mrs. Withy, who would be the direct neighbor, has had to have her children dig out ice from the trench because her her shoes getting flooded, as have neighbors over on Bartlett, that that is a huge concern. And my last question is, will this store be comparable to the one in Dryder, which is huge? And will it have directional lighting in the parking lot, along with what happens if it is not successful as a comparable one is in Moravia? Those are my questions. Maybe we'll get them answered by the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Elizabeth? Is Elizabeth Hubbard on the line? Okay, moving on to Vicky Monday, please.
Hi. So I am asking for you to instate a temporary moratorium on the building of the Dollar General on the site of in question on Route two eighty-one adjacent to Speedway. The moratorium is merited for the following reasons. On page two of the plan containing the vision statement acknowledges that the developments affect a community's future and impact the quality of life. And that this comprehensive planning process is a result of the desire of the Village of Homer to become more proactive in guiding the changing conditions of the village. Thus, the village has already outlined a proactive, not reactive policy, where approved developments should be in line with the future and quality of life residents that they want. Residents are very vocal in their opposition to this development and its potential to have negative impact on the quality of life. On page eighteen, there is a quote from the public input process. The key is to have a master plan to determine what kinds of businesses the village wants and where they should be located. A Dollar General is not in line with the vision of what businesses the village wants. Page thirty-one talks extensively about the need for the village to improve the appearance of the Route two eighty-one corridor, including developing minimum design standards to upgrade the architectural quality of commercial buildings. The Dollar General proposed does not conform to any architectural quality and design standard in keeping with the historical nature of the village. The zoning code is dated two thousand and eight, but the comprehensive plan is dated two thousand and ten. Since the zoning codes does not yet encompass the priorities and goals included in the comprehensive plan, that the zoning code should be revised before the planning board makes decisions on new development proposals. A moratorium would allow for a comprehensive study of the impacts of the development and its alternatives. Job gains, for example, already small from a Dollar General, an average of six jobs creative may be offset by jobs lost at other local stores from the economic impact of the development. Alternative development site developments for the site, such as a building, more housing may better suit the village by both increasing property tax revenue and providing as much needed housing increase. To create a strong and stable local economy, it is more important to create local wealth through local small businesses and homeownership than box store development that removes the wealth from the local economy.
All right, thank you. Bonnie Smith, please.
Yes, thank you. I am against the Dollar General and for both personal reasons and also reasons that focus more on the community and the quality of life here. Personally, I live on Burgett Drive, so my my house backs up to the fields that's going to, that is behind currently that the ice cream store that's there that will become the Dollar General. And, you know, I'm concerned about the noise and the lights at night, the trucks that need to come in, the dumpsters that need to be emptied. And all of that, what that will do to affect when we're in our backyard, what we're seeing and hearing and smelling and and that sort of thing. There's already quite a bit of traffic on two eighty-one, and, you know, we don't need more trucks coming in and or the traffic to increase for any reason on that road there, as it's already going to happen. On a less personal and just sort of a more broader level, the Dollar General is a store that sells cheap, low-quality food, low-quality products, and takes advantage of people who are low in, you know, have a low income and need to get things that are cheap that they can afford. They're not healthy products for people, the food that's there is not a grocery store, although they provide quite a bit of food, it's very low-quality unhealthy food. So and I do believe it's gonna take away business from the our our local grocery store, the IGA, that we are, that's already present in the village. I think it it appears to me like there's been a lot of effort to maintain a very quaint historical, you know, village area, you know, and the fronts of the buildings and and just the type of all that's gone, that's been going on in the village to try to keep it that way. And I don't think a dollar store fits that vision. Even if you're gonna, you know, fancy up the front of it a little bit, it's not the type of business that fits with, I think, the vision of Homer and what a lot of people have tried to to continue to, you know, maintain. Let's see. Well, a lot of people had a lot of great already points that have been mentioned. But in conclusion, I just don't think that it's going to improve the quality of life of our residents in any way, nor do I think it's gonna improve the quality of Homer as a community in any way. And so for these reasons and every, all the ones that everybody has already said, I'm totally against it.
Thank you. Liz Gagne, please.
Am I here?
Yep, you're here.
Thank you. Before I start, I just want to say hi to Mike Pollak, who probably won't remember me, but years ago he helped me marketing Inherit the Wind at Center for the Arts, so hi, Mike, thank you. I'm not a public speaker, so I'm just gonna read the letter that I have, parts of the letter that I have already submitted. My name is Liz Gagne and I live on Meadow Drive, one block away from Superscoop. I just want to say that moving or closing Superscoop and allowing in a Dollar General or anything similar will significantly change the character of Homer, especially for those of us on the west side. I'm not from Homer originally, I know what it means to people here to be from Homer. My neighbor Charlie down the street has lived for over sixty years in the house he and his wife or girl from Homer built when they got married. But he won't claim to be from here, he eventually told my husband and me, no, I'm from two miles down the road in Portland. My wife is from here, he said, their backyard, by the way, is right across from Superscoop. Homer is a special place. My husband and I looked to buy a home here after we got married, but not readily finding when we spent a year looking in every village from Pompey to Marathon to Shoreburn to Moravia. That is when I realized that Homer is uniquely special. It is a timeless village that the decades have not changed and cannot improve. A big reason for that has been Homer's support of small businesses, as someone else pointed out, as Bonnie just pointed out, that retains the village character. Imagine if the space vacated by three little birds becomes a Dunkin' Donuts, if Homer Men and Boys became a family dollar or dasher sold out to a quick stop. That's what's happening on our side of town, it's becoming, as someone else pointed out, like the worst parts of Moravia and Dryder. We've already got the Speedway and the Burn Dairy, et cetera. During the pandemic shutdown, the Superscoop was a lifeline for my husband and me. It was safe, it was outside. After finishing our work from home, we walked over there almost every day, just as an excuse to be around other people, neighbors, friends, family, and people we'd never met. One older couple from up near Auburn told us anytime they're within twenty miles of Homer, they drive out, they drive out of their way to go to the Superscoop. My husband and me with our daughter, we order our scoops and go out onto that back lot that everyone has been discussing. And we can see the rural beauty surrounding us, one of the few public places in the village where you can still sit right beside an open field. That will be lost. Dollar General wants to turn back that, turn that back lot into a parking lot, destroying the value of the homes it will surround. Superscoop, which ought to be a protected landmark, is a good, friendly neighborhood business that enhances the character and the quality of life of the village. It would be a shame to lose it under any circumstances, and a terrible disservice to Homer to lose it to a faceless chain store that won't give a jot about our quality of life. Thanks.
Liz, I have one last participant, Jen Lee, please.
Okay, there we go. So thank you for allowing me to speak, I'm sorry that I'm going to reiterate a little that I'm going to reiterate a little bit of what others have said. And I believe Vicky brought up many points of which I was also going to bring up. So, a couple of personal things. I'm not on the west side. I am on the east side on Main Street. But I have to use that intersection at least twice a day. It is very congested at the usual times you would expect. And I have concerns that being so close to the school, the high school specifically, seeing the high school students when they're in session with how they walk across to get to the Dunkin' Donuts and to the Sunoco, that now having a Dollar General too, it might become further a hazard for them going to get their snacks and other things. I believe we need to pause for a moment and wait until the Burn Dairy comes in to see what the effect would be on the traffic patterns as well as safety issues for our children. It's very important that, yes, they can get their freedom to go get a snack. I'm not holding that bag of Cheetos away from them as unhealthy it is, as it is, but I do prefer that they have a healthier and safer option. Other things I'm concerned about is, as was pointed out, that we have a village comprehensive plan, has made many, outlined many concerns of where we want to be as a village. Is the Dollar General in line with that? I understand that the planning board, that the planning and zoning has not been able to keep up with what the recommendations were, that they've been trying to make changes for many years now, and it's been an arduous process. And I appreciate everything that's been done. But it seems like we're not having time to make sure that what we want as a village is reflected within the guidelines and rules of zoning and planning. And rather than being very reactive and perhaps going forward with something that we cannot change, that we should take the moment and say, look at everybody that's saying, hey, this is not something we want, and pause, just like New York State did for COVID. Pause and say, let's wait until Burn Dairy is complete, repeat traffic studies, make new decisions, and go from there. I recognize that the property owner is looking for their interests. I really appreciate that, and I'm sorry for anything difficulty it's putting them into. But as a village, a community, we need to come together and do what's best for our future, not just for right now, but where are we going in the next ten and twenty years? I appreciate you adding me on for time. Everybody, have a good evening.
Okay, that concludes it, Maelyn.
Okay, then, at this point, that being all of the speakers that signed up to speak, I'd like to close the public hearing part of this. And then, just if there's any other discussion amongst the board members and any thing from the developers here quickly. So, if any of the board members have questions for the developers based on things that were brought out in the public hearing, or if the developers have any, you know, quick response, I guess, to the folks that spoke at the public hearing.
Maelyn?
Yes, Joan.
Did I have the name of the lady that just spoke last?
I apologize for that, Jen Lee Kloon, forty-six North Main.
It's Jenny?
Jennifer Lee.
Jennifer Lee, thank you.
Are you all set with everybody, Joan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, we, I guess we'll go back to where we were. Anything from board members again, or from the folks that are here representing the developers in terms of maybe some of the, if there's any ability to be able to respond, I know it's, I know you just heard these things this evening. So, we'll just give you an opportunity, if you'd like, for a couple of minutes here to say anything, if you would, Dan, Jason, and Kyle. You're muted, Dan. You need to unmute yourself. I can see your lips moving. There you go.
Ian Grifft from Grifft Engineering here on behalf of Capital Growth Pecultar. And just to summarize a few of the items that were repeated in here. When we first got into this job, the first thing we did was talk to DOT about the access and the safety and did some truck maneuvers with auto turn software. And the DOT did accept the location and we did show turns in and out with the auto turn software that DOT uses. From that point on, we went into what's called a perm thirty-three, stage one and two, which is an in-depth process right now. And we do trip generation reports. Very, very involved process with the DOT. They take a long time to look at it, get involved in every little section of it. They came back with us recently. They said, listen, we would, we'd like to have sidewalks on the front because there are sidewalks on some sides, and we want you to have our, the drainage report. So, we submitted drainage calculations to them that's in our SWIP. So, they have everything in hand now and everything's been moving forward positive with that. The other part of it, we do realize the issues with the surrounding property and with this land disturbing a little more than the acre of land. We did a full stormwater pollution prevention plan for water quality and quantity. And it's a, it's about an inch and a half thick book that's been sent to you and to the DOT to review. And basically, you can't increase the quantity or you have to, it basically has to be like it was in its existing condition. You can't increase the water quantity and you can't change the quality. And it, it's pretty much there. So, I just wanted to speak to the water issues and the traffic issues.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Anybody else?
Yes, Maelyn. Jason with the, with the developer did want to address a couple of issues with regards to some of the questions about the site, I believe.
Are you, I may have your name, please?
Sure, it's Jason Lang with the developer of the site. I believe it was Mrs. Riley. As far as the lighting, we will have some parking lot lighting. That'll stay on probably about an hour after the store closes. Once it gives time for the employees to safely get to their cars and get out after they do their, their closing of the store, excuse me, every night. Then, at that point, the lights, the parking lot lights are turned off. There is an emergency light, which is above the front door and on the side, just so that if anybody's driving by and somebody's up to no good, they can see somebody actually standing, you know, under the door. But other than that, all the lights are turned off after the store closes, about an hour after that. All the deliveries are during store hours. Nothing's going to be coming into the store, you know, early in the morning or late at night, overnight, you know. Those generally, we become probably between eight. The stores open generally between eight and ten. As far as those deliveries, they come there really off-peak times. So, it's, I can't really speak to when those exactly are going to be because it's really kind of dependent upon the truck routes that would be delivering to the store. But it would never be after hours or overnight. Same thing with the trash.
Okay, thanks, Jason, for that. Any other things from board members? I see the mayor is on. And Pat? Okay.
Nope, just listening.
Maelyn?
Well, yeah, Pat was gonna say something. I'm not sure what happened there.
No, I was just listening to observe.
Okay, Don, go ahead.
I don't have the application in front of me. The reference was made to store hours eight to ten. Is that eight AM, ten PM? They, they have the standard hours. Are they subject to change at the discretion of the local operator of the store?
That's, those are generally what the hours will be. Maybe a little bit later, dependent upon, you know, when the folks are coming into the store. But those are generally the hours that these stores in this area keep. And it could be, it could be earlier, could close earlier if the, if the sales, if people aren't coming in later at night. So, that's really kind of an ebb and flow, really, of the store operation once it kind of gets open and people are coming in and out.
Is this store a corporate-owned, will this be a corporate-owned store? Or will it be on a, akin to a franchise-type operation with an independent operator?
So, we, as the developer of the site, we, we find the land, we purchase the land, we build the building, and then we rent the building to Dollar General. They own and operate, they don't own the stores, but they do operate them. It's all corporately operate, their operations are on a corporate level. We, as a developer, own the building. They're not in the real estate business.
How long are the leases, Jason?
I believe that the first is ten years, and then there's fifteen years. Every ten to fifteen years, they get renewed. So, the first one would be for fifteen. Then, there's ten, and I believe it's either ten or fifteen years after that.
So, Jason, even though they have the lease, what happens if they decide that the store is not producing? They still lease it, but it could be vacant. I'm not sure if you know that answer or not.
I, I really, I really don't, but I know that we will own the building and if they vacate it, we'll look to get another tenant in there. You know, my company's been doing this probably for about fifteen years. And to my knowledge, we, I don't believe we've ever had one that we've developed that's closed. None of our stores have.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments? I would suggest that, based on all of the information that we have received over the last twenty-four to forty-eight hours, at least that I have gotten myself, that at this point, we postpone any further action this evening to give ourselves time to look at, digest, you know, all of this information that we've received. As I said, I certainly haven't had a chance to read all of the letters that were written. And then, the other thing is that this has been sent to the county, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yes, but the, the planning board has made their review, but now it has to go to the planning, or I mean, the planning department has made their staff report, which you've got a copy of, but it's preliminary. And it now has to go before the county planning board for the final resolution and determination. That will be on the twenty-first of this month.
Okay, so, you know, I, I guess, you know, the rest of the board members can comment and make thoughts here, but I would prefer to, you know, postpone. I guess we don't need the table because then that is a different action. We can just postpone any action till our next meeting, unless you folks would decide to have, for some reason, a special meeting to give us time to read all these things, look at the blueprints and that, and also wait for the official reply from county planning. Any thoughts by any of the other members of the board on, on that route of action?
Wait till after the twenty-first. The twenty-third, that report should be issued by a county board that you need.
The twenty-third of?
October.
Right, and our next regularly scheduled meeting is November ninth. So, we would have that back with their official recommendations before our next meeting.
That's correct.
Okay, Ashley, I think you wanted to comment, maybe Dick did too?
Yes, no, I agree. I think we should postpone and have another meeting to discuss, kind of like Jennifer Lee said, to pause and not make a quick decision. It is a big decision and, so, yeah, I do think we'd need to meet again and postpone.
Maelyn, I noticed there were a couple of other people wanting to speak. Is that still permissible?
I believe.
You've already closed your hearing.
Right, we have everybody that was signed up to speak. There's others, I think, that were here.
Shenandoah is on the line. She would like to ask a few questions if she could.
What's that, Dan?
Shenandoah from the Cortland Standard is online. She would like to ask a few questions if she could.
Okay, is she looking to ask of the board or of the developer, Shenandoah?
Of the developer, but I have no way of contacting them. The last time I was contacted by Dollar General, that person never responded to my follow-up questions.
So, these folks that we're talking to tonight, as Jason just mentioned, are the developer of the property and the building. They're not, if I understand Jason correctly, they are not Dollar General. Is that true, Jason?
That's correct, sir, yes.
Okay, so, does your, does the developer have a separate company name then? And also, I have a question on the parking lot there, and so I don't know how I should reach out to the developers since I'm pretty sure they can answer those questions.
Jason, the individual is Shenandoah Bree. She's a reporter from the Cortland Standard, which is our local paper.
Is her, is her email address, excuse me, on the, on the invite list? I can reach out to her and give her my information, and we can talk offline if that, if that works.
I'll toss it in the chat.
I see it. Shenandoah, I'll reach out to you with my email address. I'll, I'll send you an email, and whatever questions that you might have, I'll be happy to, to try to answer this for you.
Okay, thank you.
That work for Shenandoah?
Fantastic, Maelyn.
Perfect, thank you. Oh, Mike, go ahead, sorry.
A number of people brought up the concept of a pause or a moratorium. Moratorium sounds like a pretty official thing. I have not encountered that in the village of Homer. I see that they're doing things like that for, in other areas, jurisdictions, like for the solar program that their proposals that are being made, they want to do a moratorium. So, since that's a governmental procedure, a legal procedure, can we ask the mayor and the village attorney to educate us as to who would do such a thing and what does it entail? What is a moratorium?
I'm sure it would be them. As the municipality, I don't believe that we have that ability or authority as the planning board to do that. I know Hal is still on, and I'm not sure he may have the answer right now or not. I know Dante is not, so I don't know. I defer to Hal or Patrick, if either one of them have any ideas or thoughts on how that may work, if that was something that the village wanted to do.
Actually, none at all, Maelyn, but we'll check with Dante on it.
Okay. Mike, does that kind of?
Yes, so, we'll get educated on what it means to do that and how we go about it. We recommend it to the, to the village trustees, and we can throw the ball to them. I have no idea how that procedure works, so the more we get learned, the better.
Yep, I'm in the same boat with you. I have no idea how that would happen or, or what that would constitute. Don, Dick, Ashley, anybody else for?
Maelyn, I don't know about the rest of the folks on this board, but I sure as a heck do not totally understand all these drawings and all the plans we've got before us. Mike and I have both gone through a couple of big projects, one being the expressway, Speedway. And for that one, we hired Tim Buell. I think he's resource associates, but I'm not sure. At least Tim Buell used to be resource associates to review. I think he's resource associates, but I'm not sure. At least Tim Buehl used to be resource associates to review the plans. And interpret them for us. I'm not comfortable us interpreting the plans that the developer gave us. I can look at them. I can say what, see what they say, but do they comply with everything that the developers say they do? Quite possibly, maybe not. And I was less than ecstatic about the review on the Burn Dairy project. Particularly when I got looking and talking to people and found that the retention pond is about, the edge of it's about two and a half feet from the sidewalk. And I noticed that they're putting guide ribbons up there now. That should have been caught way before they got into the construction phase. We don't have to be rushed into anything. We need to do deliberate stuff. Deliberate review of everything that's happening on any of these projects. We, I, I think we made an error in not having Tim Buehl do the review of the Speedway or the Burn Dairy, I'm sorry, I'm just going. I, I, I sat through several months of reviews of plans on the Express Mart, whatever Speedway, whatever it is now. We made a, they made a lot of changes. The board requested a lot of changes and they were, and, and Tim caught a lot of things that no way in God's name that any of us five members on, on that board or any board would have caught. So therefore, I, it doesn't have to be in a form of a motion, I don't believe. But I think, but the village does have the authority to hire an engineer to review the plans. And my feeling is that's the way we should go. And in, and at the same time, the engineer will be reviewing what county planning says. Anybody has any opponent, opposition to me? Tell me.
Right, Ken, I totally agree with everything you've said. We need the planning board. We need an engineer to represent us.
I guess, Mike, Mike, sorry, Dick, go ahead.
Well, we need to include the comprehensive plan should be looked at in conjunction with all these other questions and thoughts that people have. We need the public's input, yes. We have to be fair to them, but we also have to be fair to the developer and ourselves.
I, I agree with being fair and I guess I would question or say that if we're going to do this in this instance. And yes, perhaps we should have done it with Burn Dairy. We didn't, but we didn't do it with family health. I would think if we were going to do this, that it's something that probably should be done on anything that comes before us. To be fair to everybody. And again, that's just my thoughts on it. And I think, do we have to, if that's going to happen, that's an expense to the village.
No, it's not an expense to the village.
It isn't, Don? So the developer has to pay for the engineer?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Don, I think that's a great idea to hire an engineer at the expense of Dollar General, just to make sure we have all our ducks in a row before we make this big decision.
And our, and our engineer can take into consideration the comprehensive plan. Just do, to guide us and and we still have our attorney to guide us on the legal aspects of it. But I think that on the technical aspects of it. I'm just not comfortable and I was not comfortable with some of the stuff that, that we were seeing. And I like to see somebody that's got a lot of experience with these types of things. Comparing this to the, the building for family health. Little bit different situation. Quite a bit different. We did have an engineer look at Burn Dairy, but it was a last minute thing. And it was a rushed review. And quite frankly, we should have just held up on it. But I, you know, I was not in the driver's seat then. I'm still not.
You have good ideas, though.
So, yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Okay, Dan Griffiths, Griffiths Engineering here. I just wanted to point out that you guys did want a landscape plan. If you look at C5 in that area, we did have a landscape architect that works for us do that. And it was emailed to the town of what, what the plant's consists of to make it look nice there. So there was an effort to do a landscape plan there. You guys could see that. Secondly, if you do go the route of a town engineer, it's not a problem. I'm a town engineer for numerous towns in New York. I'm the one that's reviewing plans for consultants all the time. So I will be open to whoever you hire with, to work directly with and have open communication for any questions or respond immediately to them.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
So, just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Very good.
Then I look at the agenda and the, the old business is the same as Dollar General. And I think we've agreed that we would postpone any further action this evening. And wait to review what we've been given and also wait for the official report or review from the county planning. So, Joan, do we need any kind of a motion for any of that? I'm not sure that we do.
Number one, if you are going to have your own engineer for the village. You need to make a recommendation to the village board of trustees that they retain an engineer to review this project. Because I believe they would be the ones that would do that. But your board should recommend that they do so, if you're going to do that. And then you would need a motion to postpone your meeting if you've decided to do that.
I'm not, I'm not saying postpone the meeting. I'm just saying any further action for this evening. I would say we wouldn't take any other action until the next regular meeting. If then, once we see what comes back from the, from the county and for all of us to be able to.
Yeah, the meeting's already scheduled then, if you use your regular meeting.
Correct. So.
I'll make the motion, Melon, that we recommend the village hiring an engineer to review the site plan. Submitted by the applicant. Homer DGLLC.
Why don't you say for the proposed Dollar General store? The site plan for the Dollar General store.
Okay, say that then.
Motion, Don.
Okay.
Motion, I'm, I'm recommending Timothy Buehl to be the engineer, but if the village.
Do you want me to put that in there? They recommend Timothy Buehl?
Yes.
Okay.
So Don made the motion, Ashley seconded it. Any other, excuse me, Joan?
No, I'm just repeating it to make sure it's right.
Yes, she did. Any other discussion, Dick, Mike?
No.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're there. So with that, we've made that recommendation to the village. So we have no new business on the agenda. Our next one would be approval of the minutes. Are we, are we still right in where we need to be here, Joan?
Yes.
Okay, so we have minutes of September 14th, 2020 to approve. We can get a motion to do so?
I'll move it.
Okay, Don?
I'll second it.
All right, Dick, thank you. Motion and second to approve the September 14th minutes. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carried. We would like to confirm, and this would be for everybody. Does the second Monday in November, which is our normal meeting, look like the next time we would like to meet? Or would you like to try to schedule a meeting before that? I'm not so sure that there's going to be sufficient time in between the county and trying to get that back to us. And maybe the village hiring an engineer to do much before that night, but I'll leave that up to you folks to.
I'm for sticking with the 9th.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Me too.
Okay, so that meeting is the regularly scheduled meeting, so we don't need to do anything with that. But that works the best for me as it is right now. Any other business to come before the board?
No, no.
Okay, none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Who was that, Don?
Yes.
Okay, motion and second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much, both the public and the board members and the folks in the development company here and the mayor and the deputy mayor for attending. So we'll see folks on the 9th at 6:30 PM. I'm thinking from the same vantage point of our computers.
Thank you for letting us speak.
Absolutely, thank you.